So for those who are just joining us, ladies and gentlemen, welcome of the public, welcome to the Wednesday, March seventeen, twenty twenty one, regular council meeting is being broadcast via Zoom. Meetings being held by Zoom rather, it's being broadcast by Rogers on cable fifty three. And you can also view the meeting at your leisure through YouTube. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask if there are any declarations of the conflict of interest from council. Seeing none. I'd like to just once again, read the traditional land acknowledgements. It's that the town of Midland recognizes it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory, the Anishinaabe people. Now known as the Chipewa Tri-council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty three. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and historic homelands of the Métis. And our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I'd also ask if we could all just take a moment to silent reflection to consider those who have passed as a consequence of COVID nineteen. Think of their families and also think of our actions as we seen in the beginnings, what may be the third wave? And how we can help to protect our friends, neighbors, colleagues, family members. So just if we take a moment of silence, please. Thank you, council. Just to let everybody know who's joining us, council has been in a closed session to discuss a couple of matters. One dealing both dealing with potential litigation, potential litigation and the training matter. Madam Clerk, I'd ask, can we pass the first of the items coming, motion arising of the first item at this point?
Yes, your worship, yes. The one dealing with the assessment is fine to consider.
Thank you. So I have a motion that's arising from that closed session. We will also be going back into closed session at the end of this regular meeting to further discuss the second item on the agenda, that agenda. But I have a motion moved by councillor Shevsky and seconded by councillor McGinn. That council here receives as information concert confidential staff report twenty twenty one dash twelve dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and the verbal update provided by the chief financial officer regarding an impact assessment appeal settlement and that council herein endorses the proposed recommendations and authorize the staff to proceed as directed. Comments or questions from council?
Councillor McGinn is not here, and I would be willing to second that.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. So seconded by councillor Cunningham, all those in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next item of business is approval of the agenda. And I have a more a motion by councillor Maine. Seconded by councillor Cunningham. At the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, be approved as amended, the addition of a provincial gas tax bylaw twenty twenty one dash thirteen. All those, sorry. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all is in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next item is moved by deputy mayor Ross, seconded by councillor Downer, that the items and related recommendations contained within the March seventeenth, twenty twenty one consent agenda as consent items have been reconsidered by council, be adopted with the exception of item ten point four point three CSR dash two zero two one dash one four or simple sports and recreation center services, March to June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, which will be considered under section fifteen reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration. Anybody have anything they want to speak to before I, councillor Gordon?
Thank you. It was just about the contract extension for principles integrity. The staff report recommends that it goes into December thirty first, twenty twenty three, which in, you know, my mind binds the next council to a year's worth of someone, maybe they want to get a different integrity commissioner. So that was my only concern. I actually originally asked to have it pulled so we could potentially talk about having it end with our term to free up the next council to make a decision on their own. However, I contacted the integrity commissioner for some advice on this one. Because of that, well, just go to the source, right? Just ask them. That's what I, what I'm allowed to do. So I did. It's and they responded to me and we had a great dialogue. Hopefully don't get billed for it. It's considered best practice to allow the newly elected council to get comfortably installed. And for this reason, accountability officers' terms typically run at least into the first year of the new term. It also ensures that there's an integrity commissioner in place to coordinate with the CIO and clerk to provide training as part of their orientation for council and appointees to local boards, which completely satisfied my concern that we were, you know, basically handcuffing the next council for a year of of the services. They need services, they're mandated by law, but just these ones. So I have zero issues with this, but I did want to bring it up because a couple of people had asked me to. And I just wanted to share on the record that that's a perfectly rational reason why we would do that. And so that's all I wanted to talk about that one. And I think that was it. The other one, somebody pulled the sports and rec center. So I do have some input on that as well, but thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor Ross.
Through your worship to councillor Gordon, just to share a bit of information. The same motion was passed at council, sorry, at county council. And because we share a integrity commissioner, they, we sort of mirror and they have the same timeframe. So that is also a second reason that I'm sure to take your concern in that, but that is one of the secondary reasons that we we try to mirror exactly what the county.
Thanks. Makes perfect sense.
Councillor May?
Thank you. I just wanted to give huge props, huge shout out to the water and wastewater department on the annual water report. Again, every year it's amazing. It keeps getting better every year. Our system, even though it gets older, it keeps getting better. So huge shout outs to them. Especially December sixteenth, when there's a water main break on Eighth Street, they're out. They're the first onsite, they're the last to leave. So huge shout outs to them. I think we're so appreciative of having a clean, safe drinking water. We never have to think twice. When you have a tall glass of water at home, which everyone has spent a lot of time at home this year, probably too much. So huge kudos to staff. They do such a great job. And this report is really illustrative of all the great work that they've done. We do have a couple of main breaks and we do have a couple of little issues that every year it's a continuous improvement. They keep getting better. They keep working away at decreasing leaks in the system. Every year we keep chipping away at combined sewers, which we'll talk about wastewater. But I just want to give credit where credit's due, just an awesome team. Thank you to Andre Pepin, Chuck Fiddy, and the whole crew, the whole team. We're so appreciative of all the hard work. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think we all would echo that. Thanks. Follow up.
Sorry, I had to, I did have one question reading the port and I guess it was, it was a, it's a technical term. It's free chloride. It was just one of the markers of of an adverse water testing. I just wasn't sure what what a free free chloride was or chloride was. I believe that's referenced in the report of if Mr. Campbell, sorry to put him on the spy here. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Through your worship to councillor Maine. I'm a civil engineer, not a chemical engineer, so I'd have to ask Chuck and the licensed operators. You know what the chemistry definition is of that. So I apologize. I can't answer your question.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was too much chlorine, not enough chlorine, but it's not a good thing, but if we monitor for it. So anyways, very appreciative of all this great report. So thank you to the team.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, like a councillor. Any further comments? Read the consent agenda. Seeing none, then all those in favor? Thank you. That too carries. The next item would be a motion moved by councillor Poston, seconded by councillor Gordon, the council resolved into the committee of the whole. So with that, deputy mayor. Oh, sorry. Are we all in favor? I knew I'd do that again tonight. Thank you.
I was, I was hoping maybe you didn't skip me tonight, but thank you. I don't think Miss Baldwin would like that. Welcome to committee whole, everyone. We have no presentation, but we do have a deputation and active transportation committee. Update from Miss Frida Bald, Baldwin, sorry, I apologize Frida. Good to see you this evening. I love your background. Beautiful. I wish we were all on a beach right now. But I'll remind you that and also we have Mr. Herb Van Dool, is that correct? I apologize if I got your name wrong. We can't hear you, but.
Yeah. So thank you for allowing us to make a presentation to our council.
And I'll remind you that you have ten minutes, Miss Baldwin, but yes, it's all yours. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah. So we're speaking on behalf of the Midland Active Transportation Advisory Committee. And I will be co-presenting with Mr. Herb Van Dool, who is a new member to our committee since the last election. But brings a wealth of active transportation to the committee. So if I could have the next slide and I can show you who else is on the committee. Am I, am I changing the slides or is, no, somebody is doing it. Okay, thank you. So our councillor rep is Jonathan Main, who is also wealth of active transportation knowledge that he brings to the committee. We do have a vacant position from the Simcoe, Miss Cooker District Health Unit because the previous representative went retired and is now, and there are no people available from the health unit. The other members are Steve Cooks, who is our chair, Howie Major is the vice chair, Rod Landy, Herb Van Dool and myself. And then as staff resources, we have Mitch Sobel, Quentin Kenny and Natalie Murdoch, who all three are doing an excellent job in helping us with the presentations. Herb is going to talk to you on the next slide about what active transportation is and why we are focused on that.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Active transportation. Just as an aside, the federal government just came out with an active transportation strategy. So this is timely. And they've put, actually, I forget how much it is. I think it's almost half a billion dollars into it in the next few years. Active transportation is any kind of non-motorized, human powered travel. So that includes many things, and this is just a short list, walking, cycling, wheelchairs, strollers, scooters, including accessibility scooters, e-bikes, the ones that require pedaling, skiing, cross-country skiing in places like Midland, rollerblades, snowshoes, anything else you can dream of. And includes any kind of trips, whether it's for recreation or for running errands, going to school, work, visiting friends or family. Next slide, please. As a committee, what we do is represent council and we work to improving the quality of life for all Midland residents by focusing on active transportation. We believe that we can improve the quality of life and make make it safer for residents to move around and go about their daily lives regardless of age or ability. Next slide. That's my wife and kids. Active transportation in the winter. Next slide. And all ages and abilities. Next slide. So why active transportation? I'll just cover this quickly. Probably people have a good sense of why, but just as a reminder that we want to align with federal, provincial and county policies on complete streets and also with healthy communities. Especially during a pandemic, it's, it's, it's good to give people alternatives for moving around with, especially when so many indoor places are closed. Give people more options so they're not reliant on for all their trips on a private automobile that they can take public transit and combine it with with walking or biking. And of course, there's also the economic and tourism benefits. People already are biking up here from Barry and using local business during the summer. And people can explore the the outdoors here by on foot or bike or by other means, snowshoe skiing. Next slide. So Frida, you'll take it over this section.
Yeah. Yeah. So the purpose of our meeting is that we bring you up to date on activities that the committee has been involved with, and we will be doing this based on the motions that we have passed. These motions will be brought forward again for the consideration in the two thousand and twenty two budget. And it will be brought forward with proper documentation and background information for council's consideration. The first project that we have considered is the pollinator pathway. As you may be aware, on pages thirty one and one hundred and three on the Parks and Trails master plan, a pollinator gardens are mentioned. And this proposed pollinator pathway is actually proposed for a connection between Hubel Avenue and Cook Avenue, Cook Drive, sorry, which is right adjacent to the high school. So we are asking that it be prioritized in terms of funding from the municipality and resources, but also that other funding opportunities be applied for and that funding for the design and the construction be allocated in the two thousand and twenty two capital budget, because we are too late for two thousand and twenty one. We had originally hoped to make this presentation in December, but unfortunately didn't get on the agenda. Next slide, please. This is an issue that was brought forward by a resident of Midland who indicated that when she uses the sidewalk on Harborview, it kind of throws her into the traffic at the northern end of that sidewalk right onto a Harborview. And with the snowbanks that were in place over the winter, it was unsafe for her to 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 get onto the road. So we are asking that consideration be given for pedestrian connections for Harborview Drive, which may include sidewalks on Harborview Drive, and that this be considered at the time of the Fuller Avenue Harborview Drive realignment infrastructure. So that is our request to council, but as I mentioned, we will come back with more information. Next slide, please. The other activity we've undertaken is to look at the proposed crosswalk locations that were in the, I think, the transportation master plan. And after some considerable discussion at the committee, we are asking that the Hubel Avenue and William Street, the crosswalk, that's the bottom motion on the screen, be changed to Elizabeth Street and William Street, and that it be prioritized. And then we have also made a list, a shortlist of three crosswalk installations that we think are the most important to undertake is First Street and Elizabeth Street, Elizabeth Street and William Street, and then Bay Shore Drive and Mandy Street. Next slide, please. And Herb will continue.
Does someone have how much time we have left?
I do. You have three, three minutes roughly.
Okay.
Oh, we'll let you go a little longer if we have to, but if you could wrap it up in next five.
It's a, it's a little bit in depth. This part is what we're working on. And so I just wanted to give a quick overview. It's, it won't do it justice, but just some of the things that we've been talking about and seeing how we can improve things. And the first one is making our community safer by reducing speeds. Next slide. Why would we talk about reducing speeding? The main thing is that speed limits and speed speeds, the speed limits and speeds themselves increase, so do fatalities. Someone is traveling at fifty five kilometers an hour is five times more likely to die than a person hit by a car traveling at thirty five kilometers an hour. Across Canada, there's a number of towns and cities that have are working towards reducing their speed limits and and also reducing speeding. And this, this is for, yeah, for towns, small and large cities alike. There's a lot more research now coming out and so we're trying to see how Midland can benefit from this as well. Next slide. These are just some of the measures that we've been talking about, and some of these, we require more feedback from staff. The first one is about traffic calming measures. The staff are creating some guidelines around this and we'll be reviewing this in the future. We've been identifying hotspots where we believe that speeding is is a big problem. And this includes places like Fourth Street, which has made the news recently. Lowering the speed limits. Again, this requires some more investigation of other jurisdictions and what that means for for smaller towns in Ontario or Canada. And improving enforcement. And for this, we're getting, working with staff to find out more about how towns can work with the OPP for automated speed enforcement. So this requires having cameras and then sending out tickets via the OPP based on the cameras. Next slide. We also did a review of Little Lake Park intensive review and came up with a number of improvements for safety and accessibility. There were two items that the staff put into their budget request. And there's an attachment here to a Google Doc with more information about that, where these are. I actually don't know what the result of that was, if these have been improved in the budget. Next slide. I think that's the same one. Next slide. There you go. And then there were a few other ones, which we, we got estimates from staff on the cost. There's a few, these are little things like regrading ramps, making curb cuts, putting in some parking curbs, marking some crosswalks. So they all have a price tag and our plan now is to put them before council for the twenty two, twenty twenty two budget. Next item.
And this is a topic that I wanted to talk about because I brought it forward to council last year and it was supposed to be considered in the two thousand and twenty one connection. Because now that the County of Simcoe has built and is continuing to build multi-use paths along Highway ninety three, we felt that there should be a connection from the waterfront to County Road ninety three. We can do this a number of ways. It could be a multi-use trail along Vinden Street. Or it could be a connection from the mid pen link, which is paved and normally connects into Pinnetang Wishing. But if you continue straight through on an unopened road allowance, it does eventually go in the direction of County Road ninety three, but there is some private land involved. It's my understanding that the landowner may be agreeable to allowing for a trail on that property. Next slide, please.
If we could wrap it up in next minute, that'd be great, please. Thank, thanks, Miss Baldwin.
So this is a map of the trail along Vinden. And the next slide will show a trail from the mid pen link towards ninety three. But as I mentioned, the western end is private land that would have to be negotiated. I also wanted to point out that this is the lands around the water reservoir of Midland between Vinden and Sunny Sound. And it's an absolutely gorgeous area of old growth and absolutely beautiful that I personally would like to see some nature trails in it. So if we could make a connection to ninety three through these lands, some of them are wet, we have to find a dry route. I think that would an absolute great destination for Midland residents to walk through or bike through. On the north end of the reservoir, there are also already a multitude of bicycle trails, mountain biking. So it's only a logical connect extension that there are more trails built in that area. And that, I believe, yeah, next slide. Now, it's just to remind you that in the transportation master plan, this particular project was timed for two thousand and thirty seven, but we would like council to consider prioritizing it, that we apply for additional funding to make it happen. And that funding for the design and building of the Vinden Street trail be allocated in the two thousand and twenty capital, but we missed that as well. So the item was referred by council on December eleven nineteen, actually for further consideration in council, but it still hasn't happened. So maybe for the next budget consideration. So thank you for your attention and we're open for questions if there is time for that.
Yes, sir. I'm sure there will be some questions. Thank you very much. Mr. Van Van Dool and Miss Baldwin. Always a pleasure. And I have to say, how long you been on the, on this committee, Miss Baldwin? You really are amazing and and thank you so much on behalf of all council. Your passion for this is spectacular. And thank you so much for all your, all your hard work. I know John Main would feel the same way and and I think, you know, we let you go over an extra five minutes and you more than deserve it. You're more than greatly appreciated. I would never cut you off. John Main would, councillor Main would never forgive me. So thank you very much. And we have some questions. I see councillor Gordon, councillor Gordon.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I do enjoy the active transportation meetings. I actually make popcorn when I watch them because Howie's hilarious. And it's almost like the active transportation show. So I do enjoy those and anyone who's watching, I encourage you to look at the YouTube channel and check it out. It's a, it's a great way now that all these things are broadcast to be able to catch meetings. I learn all kinds of new things through them. And now one of the asks you made that you presented to us was what the Cook Drive Trail. And I'm pretty sure, correct me if I'm wrong here, anybody, that we passed that coming out of our reserves as a capital project for this budget for this year. And the intention is to, I don't know what we're doing with it, but there's a significant chunk of money that's being allocated to doing something to that trail. So I think that motion may be moot, as your wish may be granted. I see Andy Campbell's popped to life. So that, that was really my main, my main one question. Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Campbell, can I comment? I see you've got your camera on.
Yes, that Cook Drive Trail was approved by council in this year's budget. So we, it's in our work plan. And we've also applied for a grant to offset those costs if we're lucky enough to get that grant for it.
Wonderful news. Thank you so much. Any other questions, councillor Ochesky?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharon. Thank you for the presentation. A great presentation, certainly something I'm trying to get more into as I age a bit here. I'm starting to try to get back on a bike and I keep my active transportation up myself. So I appreciate the the presentation. Some of the, I love the talk of nature trails and we've talked about Little Lake Park and some, you know, beautification and some, some improvements in there. When we had some discussions last year around splash pads and a few other projects, we had some service groups come to the table hoping to get their name on some of the things that we were working on. I'm curious if you guys have presented to any service groups locally or if you'd be open to it. In discussions, maybe like the Rotary Trails, the Rotary Trail for good reason, and maybe other service groups want to be involved and maybe have a namesake trail or a nature trail. Certainly an appetite to be fundraising for our splash pad, and that was hundreds of thousands of dollars. So thirty five thousand dollars or maybe another small project. It doesn't seem like a lot of money and I'd, I'd help fundraise and not to say that I wouldn't support it if it came to council, but I just thought the service groups out there right now, we need stuff to rally the community. We need things to get people excited. So just curious if we get the service groups involved and maybe fundraise instead of putting it on next year's budget, let's get it done.
Miss Baldwin, here to answer?
No, we would welcome any. No, we would welcome any uh leads to service groups to make the these projects happen, of course, yes. Or any other grant, grant opportunities that are available that we may be able to apply to. Thank you for that lead.
And I see John Maine, uh, Councilman was writing that down for the next meeting, so thanks, thanks for that. And uh, just to touch on that, Councilor Ocheski, you're about to have. Uh, your own active transportation coming anytime soon and I'll tell you, a kid will get you moving, I promise you that, so good luck. Uh, any other questions? I saw a counselor main.
Uh, yes, thank you so much for the deputation. Yes, I will uh echo the sentiment from Deputy Mayor. Thank you again, uh, Member. Uh, Baldwin, Frieda, it's been fantastic to have you on the committee. Thank you so much, Mr. Uh, Vanden Dool and yeah, thanks to Mr. Major, Mr. Lundey. Steve Cux has been great addition. We have lively discussion debate and it's, you try to talk these things out. Very fortunate to develop that. Parks and Trails uh plan as well as the act of transportation, uh, multimodal plan. So it's been fun trying to look at this big, long to-do list and try to figure out with the limited means that we have, so. Uh, this is a great approach is you try to take the uh projects that, you know, might be further down the list, try to move them forward. Or you take something like Little Lake and try to break off a couple of little micro projects that perhaps could be incorporated into the existing operational budget. Like a couple of curb cuts here and there, you know, it's a very simple little thing, but increases the accessibility, uh, you know, it gets rid of those barriers that we're talking about, so. Uh, every year, I, it was very exciting developing the ten-year capital plan. Every year, we're going to plug away, a little sidewalk segment. Sidewalk segment here, a little cycle path here, uh, there. And I think we're kind of really moving in the right direction. So again, appreciate. All the effort to put some of these fun ideas forward and to try to just plug away at them every year, just try to do a couple of little projects here and there. Um, we also had a really lively and uh fulsome debate on winter cycling and snow removal and. You know, Midland gets lots of snow and it's really cold here, but it's cold elsewhere. So how do we, you know, break through the barrier and continue to encourage people to be active through the winter time? And yes, I think that's the great point that you mentioned is actor transportation has been a really big emphasis during the pandemic. Trying to get people outside, not only for vitamins, uh, D or whatever you get from the sunshine, but also just respirating, try to get people. Puffing and puffing and really be in their best shape because that's one of the best defenses against COVID is a really healthy active lifestyle. So again, thank you for the hard work. Thank you for the deputation. And uh, again, thank you to the clerks because we have a, have a bunch of these motions that have been kind of circulating around. And we want them to get the council's blessing approval, especially around pedestrian crosswalks. I think that's going to be something as we roll out them the next couple of years, you know, hopefully three a year for the next couple of years. That that's going to be, I think, really, really appreciated by the community and it's a old but new technology for us and I think it's going to be great. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments? I see none. I do have a motion that we're going to bring forward, and so I'll read that. Moved by Councilman. Second by Council Gordon, that Council received as information, the update provided by Ms. Frida Baldwin and Mr. Herb. Vanden Dool, representing the Midland Active Transportation Advisory Committee and that the various motions highlighted within the presentation. Be brought, be brought back to council by way of a report from the committee, providing details and background information. In support of the recommendations for council's consideration. Any questions and comments with regards to this motion, Councilman?
I just wanted to add, I know, um, give shout out to Quentin uh Kenny, who has been uh working with Mr. Campbell on that one Cook Trail project. And it does sound like a local developer may also be uh helping to donate towards some funds towards that. So it's great that you have some community involvement. The high school students are going to be very excited for the pathway. I know the residents as well, so it's great that we get to flag these little mini projects and then to. Strike while the iron is hot, so thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilman. Any other question or comments? You've heard the motion, all those in favor? So Carrie, thank you very much, uh, active transportation for coming this evening, Mr. Uh, Vanden Dool and Mr. Uh. Baldwin, thank you so much for your time this evening and we look forward to the report coming back to council and hopefully get moving on a few of these projects. Any last words before you go?
No, thank you for your time and we look forward to uh next year's budget.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item up, uh, committee, we have uh reports withdrawn from the consent agenda and uh. We have one, I know. Only as I asked for it to be withdrawn and it's report, uh, that staff report CSR dash two thousand twenty-one dash fourteen. North Simcoe Sports Recreation Center reopening plan dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one be received and. That staff continues to support the vaccine vaccination center and operations by. By option two vaccinations, along with ice surface opening for rental and the rental of gym for activities. Forbidden under the provincial framework. I only pulled this because I wanted to make sure that the public were aware exactly what the plan was. With regards to this motion and when we look at uh option two. It states that option two would allow the vaccination center to operate for at least four months, ice rentals for two. Two months, area floor rental for two months, sorry, arena floor rental for two months and gym rental for four months. This would be the preferred option for staff at this time. It would allow staff to maximize facility use and create space for safe exercise while assuring back station. While assuring the vaccination clinic is operating and allow the town to remain. Maintain some reserves. So I just wanted to make sure, I apologize, but I want to make sure that the public is aware. That by passing this motion today, the ice will stand for the next two months. It'll go out and we will allow. Uh, for falling two months for the floor of the ice surface, sort of our arena to be used for ball hockey. When well permitted and uh the gym will be available to our public for the next four months. With that said, one of our arenas. Ice surfaces will be used for the full four months as a vaccination center. So I just, I I felt it important to pull this. Um, you've heard the motion, we do need a mover and a seconder, if I could help have a mover. I see Council Downer and Council Ocheski, Council. That would be wonderful and I, if uh Mr. Denal would care to comment further, that'd be fantastic.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. If if you don't mind, I'd like to uh turn it over to Sean Burrow and and he can provide me comments on. On the plan, I would like to express my appreciation, uh, certainly to Sean and the entire team that's. That took a careful look at this. I was, I was quite impressed by how they, they planned out the facility to make sure it was safely done. Uh, in order that people potentially accessing services, but also taking um. Taking advantage of the vaccination center where we're certainly protected. So if you don't mind, I'll ask Sean to make any comments.
That would be fantastic. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Mr. Barrio, how are you this evening?
I'm good. Um, I I think you summarized as well. We plan on maximizing the facilities that we're allowed to rent. And keeping the vaccination clinic free and clear from all other operations in the facility. So. If you're using the ice, you won't be interrupting the vaccination clinic. If you're using the gym, you won't be interrupting the other services. And the Boys and Girls Club can still operate as well.
Sorry, wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Barrio. Uh, any questions or comments for Mr. Barrio at this time? Council Gordon and then I'll have Councilman.
Thanks. So I mean, I definitely want to echo your, your comments, Deputy Mayor Ross, that this is a, I think, a well-thought-out compromise solution, making the best out of a bad situation. And kudos to the staffer for finding this. Uh, I have had some people approach me that, you know, would prefer option one. Or even option three and look at some savings. Um, you know, skeptical that anyone would resume using the ice for the short period of time. But my response has been that, you know, we've heard it as a council and I'm assuming our staff has got some type of commitment. That they're banking on that this, this ice surface and the um basketball and everything can resume safely for practicing, I guess, no, no scrimmages. But that they've got the commitments in place, so I have faith that uh this is a well-thought-out compromise. And I'm fully in agreement. Number two, we can't get the kids back in there fast enough, in my opinion. And of course, vaccine clinic, that's a, a no-brainer. So thanks to the staff who brought this forward.
Well said, Council Gordon. Councilman?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess the option of having two vaccination clinics is not on the table. Uh, so that was just a. Joke, but uh, um, that would be fantastic, but it looks like this is a wonderful compromise and with all the safety protocols in place. Um, just a question in terms of the gymnasium, it will just be for the designated groups or will that be available for? Uh, you know, uh, s- small groups to be able to book at some time because we're entering this very weird transition period. We'll have a. A portion of, of a population vaccinated and I know the grandparents want to get back with the grandkids. And it's not quite safe yet for everybody, but it might be safe for some, uh, depending on the vaccination, depending on safety protocols. Uh, but is that an option and how would somebody go about renting uh the arena? Thank you.
Mr. Barrio?
No, the intention right now is just our organized groups and I believe the legislation right now, especially under red, is organized groups only. So as we transition to orange or yellow, um, we can branch out and whatever is permitted. Safely we will do, but right now it's just the organized groups.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrio, and hopefully uh to you, your point, Councilman, that the weather turns nice and that the, you know, kids will have the opportunity to play some of these sports. Outside in the beautiful weather, so let's keep our fingers crossed. It's early spring. Any other questions or comments with regards to this motion? I see none. I thank staff for the time for uh updating and I think it was important that our community realize and. See what exactly what the plan is for this rec center. So thank you so much. All those in favor for this motion? So Carrie, thank you so much. Next up on the agenda is a COVID update, uh, from our CEO, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross, and uh, thank you again for the support of council in in the recommendation and the. And I think the thoughtful uh considerations that were brought forward by our staff to to continue to serve our residents and I know we're all. Uh, very supportive of trying to keep them healthy, certainly in terms of providing safe environments, but giving them alternatives to. To certainly use the facilities that also contribute to their health. So uh, thank you very much for that support. I would like to, before I get into the specifics on COVID, also give a shout out to uh our, our road operations team who did a fantastic job through. Uh, pretty heavy winter, uh, dealing with a tremendous amount of snow and dealing with Little Lake Park, which we opened up as, as you know. Under council's direction. Um, so that was, I think, a relatively positive experience. I think we, uh, we certainly learned. How we can service that area and I think, uh, you know, if there's any adjustments we need to make, we'll, we'll make those, but. Again, kudos to to Andy and and his team for handling that so well through the winter. Also want to give a shout out to our transit. Operators, including our community reach, um, drivers as well. They uh, they've just done tremendous, tremendous work and. In getting people to where they need to go during a pandemic and again focusing on the safety aspect of it, so. Uh, would just like to rec- recognize those groups uh at the top. Uh, COVID, if if you've been paying attention to the news, uh, we're again in uh, in a very concerning trend in Simcoe Muskoka. Um, there's a couple of school outbreaks, one in Barry and one in Bradford, but um. As I think we all know, the UK variant, which is very prominent in Simcoe Muskoka continues to to wreak its havoc. Uh, in Midland, a hundred and thirty-four cases, six deaths. In the month of March, uh, the the six cases that we've seen so far. They've been relatively younger age groups too, or in the eighteen to thirty-four range or in the forty-five to sixty-four range, so. Uh, this um, this variant certainly uh doesn't discriminate in terms of age and we know it's quite lethal. Uh, for the elderly, so uh, when these young people get it, in addition to being very severe for them, it can obviously. You know, be uh, be transmitted through social means. So again, practice your distancing, practice all those good protocols, please. Uh, same with penitangishing. Penitangishing saw quite a jump in the last few months and there's a couple of outbreaks that contributed to that, but again, you're seeing a lot of their cases. And in quite young people. Tay, same thing, you're seeing again, uh, quite a number of young people being affected by the cases. A couple deaths and Tay, uh, one death and tiny. Uh, so again, quite, quite um. Quite a concerning environment. Um, I know the, the weather is certainly making people feel optimistic, which is good. And hopefully they'll be able to get out and and distance themselves more, so I think we're all looking forward to that and certainly the vaccination. Uh, ability is certainly scaling and increasing as we go. So on the vaccination front, about fifty-eight thousand people in Simcoe Muskoka. Have been vaccinated with the Pfizer uh vaccine. Eventually, they're doing about fifty-eight thousand people a day. Uh, one point three million people have admit, have been administered a vaccine, about two hundred ninety thousand people are fully vaccinated. So good progress, I think, I think we'd all say that and I know everyone's watching the news in terms of the vaccine supply. Uh, I think the, the mechanisms that we have at the vaccination centers will certainly allow us to scale, hopefully to meet that demand. And I know there's been an overwhelming response from the community uh by people who want to assist former healthcare workers and whatnot, so. I think, um, again, another tremendous uh response by the community to, to help each other. Um, but to be clear on the vaccination center though, because I think there is some confusion, we are hosting the vaccination center certainly at the rec center. But please don't call the rec center to try and book your vaccine. Because that's not how you do it either. Um, go to the provincial website. Um, if you're over eighty or over, there is a phone number. One, one, triple eight, triple nine, six, four, eight, eight. Once again, one, triple eight, nine, 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 six, four, eight, eight. And that's if you're eighty and over, you know, that vulnerable group. Otherwise, you know, you can go to the provincial website and you can. Sign up for your uh, for your vaccination. Be patient and I think we all understand that they're increasing the capacity to deal with. With all the appointments, but you will, I think you will, uh, you will get through at some point. Um, but thanks everyone to their patience and resilience and dealing with, with everything that's going on. I think we've got a tremendous community that's obviously. Really supportive. Uh, you've got administration here and you saw it with the uh, the last report that really cares about offering services to. To our community, so uh, thank you for your patience and allowing us to do that. And I'm glad to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions with regards to COVID update, uh, Council Gordon?
Thanks, I, I just wanted to uh echo your, your comments about Little Lake Park this winter and the good job that was done to keep it open. It was a bit of an experiment, it's been a long time. And I think uh, from the reports I'm getting from people that talk to me, it's been a resounding success. I got the couple people that would really wish it went back to the old way of just closing it down, no cars, but generally they're car-hating people anyway. But uh, they are friends of mine, so I'm, they, I give them a hall pass, but it was really nice to see it well-used and the fact that you guys pulled it off without ripping up the speed bumps. Because originally that, I think that was the plan, right? So that saved money and probably a huge pain. And they kept the place open and it was well-received, so I think uh, Bravo, absolutely. I think the lion's share of the people I heard from are clapping hands. And throwing roses, not hatchets on this decision and well-executed. So uh, I know it's not really COVID-related, but you brought it up in this, so I just wanted to echo that.
Any other questions or comments with regards to the COVID update? Mayor Strether?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. It's more of a comment than a question. I'd just like to say to anybody, to everybody who's listening, that all four approved vaccines are safe. And there's been a lot of questions around AstraZeneca in the last week or two. There's one medical officer, epidemiologist said, this vaccine doesn't seem to be able to catch a break. Uh, however, Nasi has now reversed or revised their recommendation and are recommending it for people over sixty-five and over. Same with the uh, industry of health, same with World Health Organization, same with the European Medical Association. Uh, they haven't said it officially, but expect to see it uh tomorrow. France has flip-flopped, they're now back in with AstraZeneca, same with Germany. Results out of the UK are incontrovertible, same with the results out of. Israel. So once again, you're offered a vaccine, take it. They're all equally efficacious or. Certainly, they are going to keep you from being seriously ill and perhaps dying, as well as presumably those you come in contact with. So I'd just like to put that out there as part of the CAO's update.
Well said, your worship. Any other questions or comments with regards to COVID update? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Denal. Greatly appreciated. Next item up, we haven't noticed the motion. Anyone have a notice of motion to bring forward? I see none. Uh, we'll move on to general announcements. Anyone have a general announcement? Your worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, it came to my attention in a roundabout way this week through the clerk. That our CAO, along with the remaining, uh, all the CEOs from Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit Catchment Area. Were um awarded for their disservice to the community and to the health unit.